A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Morning, everybody. I want to make something get through. I think we have an amended agenda. At least I was set one.
Yep.
Adding a nine o'clock discussion and things with the Ayers and Cooney law firm. So...
I would make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second. All right. Any discussion?
Do I have a copy of the amended?
No.
It doesn't say amended on...
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both amended agenda approved minutes from the twelve twenty-eight meeting.
I have two minutes and they looked good, so I would make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both minutes approved. General public concerns. Is there anyone on Zoom? Anyone on the phone?
Uh...
No.
No. Andy, Shirley, Kent. I agree. And me.
Oh, okay. Nice. All right. If you're even hearing none, we'll move on to Ben, who is actually here and on Zoom at the same time. Amazing, eh? Looks like we have the contract with Shuck-Briston Incorporated for the environmental study.
Yeah, so this is a, this is a study that we've been talking about with regards to Murray Bridge. This is to get our environmental and cultural clearances. This is a necessary precursor before you would end up replacing this bridge. I know we did not get the funding this year from the state, but we were at the top. When I talked to the committee, they mentioned that this is stuff that we can do beforehand, before we get the funding, and that it will always be viable. Whether we get the funding next year, five years from now, ten years from now, all you would have to do is basically bring that up to date. I don't know as far as how long the longevity is, where the report stays active, if it's five years without having to do a simple update with the DNR. But basically, if we're looking at replacing this bridge, this is something that needs to be done. And nothing gets cheaper.
Yeah.
So the same study, ten years from now, is gonna cost us...
Twice as much.
Twice as much.
Does this say in here someplace, I thought there's a lot of stuff in here, approximately what it costs?
Right, so it is a not-to-exceed cost of about a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand?
Yes. This is to get all of the environmental clearances. This is to run, this is to do thirty cross-sections of the existing river upstream and downstream so that they can do a hydraulic study to make sure that the bridge that we're designing is large enough to handle the entire flow of the west branch of the Des Moines River. This is about eight hundred, roughly eight hundred engineering hours from their company, with the majority of the hours being done by an environmental engineer to determine how many acres of wetland are gonna be affected, different viable options of where we can purchase wetland because the way the DNR and their flood plan works is basically, if they come back and say that we're affecting five acres of wetland, we have to go out and purchase usually double that. So we would have to purchase ten acres of designated wetland to offset the wetland that we would be affecting by building the road along those alignments.
Yeah.
It's just like farmer piling a wetland, you have to mitigate wetland.
Yeah, it's just like a tile project. We run through the wetlands, we gotta mitigate it out and purchase it.
So Ben, this is to get the fund, the state funding that we're after, or you've been working on.
Right.
This would be a required report, yeah?
This is a required report for them.
You'll never get that funding without...
Without having this, this study completed.
No.
And this is, like I said, it's all about, they do the hydraulics, they size the bridge, they look at three different locations, which mainly, I had the conversation last week, I said it's basically two locations. You know, you're looking at the north route on Elm Avenue, you're looking at the east route on One Hundred and Ninetieth, but then the third route that they have to look at is keeping it and the road at the current location that it's at, and then what they would have to do to try and stabilize the road to keep it from falling into the road.
Yeah, keep from losing the road.
And I told them, I said, "It's not really feasible, the amount of money that you'd spend to try and keep the road where it's at, you could buy right away and pop up on the other side of Tim Cleveland's house for cheaper." But it's still an...
This process they gotta go through.
It's still a necessary study that they've gotta go through. So the most that this would cost us would be a hundred thousand. The, the least, you know, the, the least, I don't know what the least is, it's gonna be based on the number of hours that they have to put in. But this is a contract not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Yeah.
Do you know how often they do these bridge bundling, bundling projects?
So these are part of the build grant. Before it was a build grant, I believe they called it Tiger. Similar funding. They do it every year.
Oh, they do it every year?
They do it every year. As, as they have funding this year, the DOT is applying for twenty-five million on behalf of the counties of Iowa. Talking to them, they said that they'll be running this again next year, so I don't know if they've already signed on for next year. So I guess I'm, I'm just trying to get all of our ducks in a row so that we can reapply next year.
Yeah. I didn't know if it was a five-year program or if it was a ten-year, every five years or every seven or ten years they do that. That'd be good to get started.
It sounds like it's frequent.
Okay. All right.
Well, just checking, Ben, on the, back here on page, whatever the, page three of the, in the middle, the project cost is one sixteen four ninety-three.
Right, so there's a, there's a contingency of...
If the hourly rate is higher for certain things, is that the way I'm reading this?
Well, the hourly rate shouldn't change. There's a, there's a sheet that shows what their hourly rate is. I don't know, which is crazy. There's a, there's a ten thousand dollar contingency on there, which he said would probably be wiped out. About fifteen thousand for a survey, or twelve thousand for a survey, twenty-one thousand for hydraulic analysis. The, the big chunk of it is the environmental.
Right.
I mean, that's almost forty-five thousand. But these are all, like it says up above it, these are all costs to be paid hourly, not to exceed that amount.
Yeah. And they usually project stuff high.
And that's what he told me. He said, "These are, are projected high." Basically, we don't wanna have to come back and ask them more later, is what he said. My, my intentions for this is, I've already got seventy thousand that I set aside for an assistant engineer.
And that's what a lot of us do.
We're trying with that funding that we're not spending on another employee towards this study.
Yeah. Sounds like a good plan.
Good use of your money.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Shuck-Briston for the environmental study.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion on all this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Approved. There's something I have to sign.
You got magnifying glass?
I know, right?
I can read small, but this is getting all...
That is real small.
Which one is it?
It's all these in the back.
All the spreadsheets?
Yeah.
I think I've got some of them printed sideways so that they show a little bit larger, but...
Ben, have you got anything else other than this neat thing?
Uh, I do not. We're gonna come in today and try and clean up some of the snow here at the courthouse before it starts piling up too big.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
The guys right now are emptying sand out of their boxes and cleaning their trucks up and...
Sounds like we got a good stretch of weather coming again.
Yeah, I think there's a forty percent chance on Wednesday.
But they said like less than two inches.
My guys in Hardy were out picking up garbage that somebody threw in the middle of a gravel road this morning.
Let's try to get our Christmas trees now, too.
Well, this was an aluminum garage door and a great big CRT tube TV.
Oh, you're kidding me?
Yeah.
I understand why people think they can do that. I just don't get it.
Yeah. They don't know what they got.
Look at the fingerprints charging for it.
But, no, we're, we're busy. We did get our stop signs delivered last week. Plan is, we're gonna replace everything on the western half of the county this year, everything on the eastern half next year. This is with DOT funding. Basically, we pay for the cost of the signs upfront and we're reimbursed ten thousand dollars. I just wrote the date.
No. Oh, you're on the wrong date.
I wrote twenty twenty still. Yeah, we, we paid for the original cost of the signs and then the DOT cuts us a check for ten grand.
Okay.
We've already been approved for that funding.
Right.
We just have to let them know when we're done installing. That's, that's all I've got for right now. Starting to work on budget numbers and trying to allocate money around and planning for next year already.
Looks good. All right, moving along. Did you get word from Kathy about this?
Shirley's on there.
Shirley is?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, she just got on.
Okay.
Good morning.
We could move forward with that, then, on the side of Midas, presentation of what Pathfinder does. For us, for any projects, we need assistance on and appointment of representatives.
That'll look like.
Is there anybody on there that needs to be?
Looks like.
Somebody else called.
You're muted, Kathy. There. We're muted. A couple staff members, but I can start, I can get going.
Okay, go ahead, please.
What's that?
It said, "Yes, go ahead, please."
Okay, thank you. So I'm captured here with the new Pathfinder strategic partners. And, and any member from our board, which I've been struggling, um, not struggling, actually just struggling. It's been a long time coming with our rebranding and our name change, but we'll still remind everyone that we're Midas in the background. I don't know if we've got any new supervisors on the board today?
Nope. Well, it's been on.
Well, just as a reminder for those who, for the supervisors, my, our, my, our Pathfinders, as it sounds like to be known, was formed through a twenty-eight agreement through the six county areas, and we were formed to provide governmental services to you and to your county. With me today, Shirley Hagelold is the head of our community development division. Shirley, can you...
Hey, Shirley.
And Brittany Markard is on, and she's one of our planners. In fact, she's brand new. We're very excited to have her. Jake Cameron is the head of our transit division, and I have a feeling, I'm here in the office and I can hear him talking, I think he might've got caught on a phone call. So he, right at the top, he is. I should mention that Rick Q is also one of our planners, and he's, oh, no, he's probably just running late. And then, we have the management division, we have the community development division, and we also have an economic development division, which is mainly set by myself. And also, we have on a contractor now, an employee, basically through a TPA grant, got a contract employee titled as economic discovery coordinator, and his name is Brandon Shaw. And so under the economic development division, we are operating a revolving loan fund to encourage small business startups as well as expansion for businesses. I am also the staff person for the local workforce development board. And so that's an economic development, I can see, Sandy's laughing. I'm the staff person. I try and...
No, you're not trying. You're doing a marvelous job. We appreciate it, Kathy.
Thank you so much. So that's really right now the activities capital and on under our economic development division. And I would ask Shirley if she could give some highlights, high-level, you know, overview of what we do in our community development division. Shirley, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, yep.
Well, as you know, I'm Shirley Hagelold, Midas. Our community development division operates in several areas. We provide grant writing and grant administration. We codify ordinances and help you develop individual ordinances. We provide environmental assessments, various different policies and plans we can develop. We do transportation planning, of course, provide technical assistance to all our members. We currently, for the county, have been working with several of your cities. For City of Bone, we're actually developing their ordinances right now, and we're working with them on a search grant to help identify problems with their water system. And then we're gonna, once we have that completed, we are going to do a CBG application along with either SRF and USBA funding. We are working with four currently right now by a TPG grant for their water system. It has got a few people with issues in your area with their water systems or get to that age where they have problems. We have developed a couple county ordinances for a couple of our counties. If you're interested in doing codifying your ordinances, and if you don't have all your ordinances in one, maybe, I know the county has most of ordinances. We have taken all those ordinances and codified them into one application book. So we, we provide that. We're also working with one of the counties on their Iowa State interoperation, speed system program, trying to find funding for them to help bring their, their communications up to that level and to provide communication power. They're currently contracting with their radio, but we're looking at funding for the power. And they're working...
Join the meeting.
We are also working with Southern County on various grants for human service providers. For instance, in County County, we're working with them to do a TPG grant for their upper Des Moines housing facility, because they actually work on them they need to have done. But they're in various cities, so they have to be a county-wide grant, and we have done that. We have also done county-wide housing grants. If you're interested in something like that, if it's Des Moines, it's one city, or in the, on the upper area of the county, you have to do county-wide housing supplies. We are also serve as the regional planning affiliation for the six counties that we have. It's pretty humble. And the regional planning affiliation, which is regional five for our area, handles the purpose transportation, lot grant funding for roads, and the transportation alternative program for trails. So we are working with the various county engineers and the Midas Board, which serves the policy board. On that program, in fact, starting probably March, we'll be accepting applications for road projects and for trail projects that will be coming out, which I usually send out those you can get from me. Currently, last year, we just funded, of course, a project for Humble County, roads, but we also funded a bridge project for the Indian Valley. There's so many more applications coming up that are available. I don't know if I could list them all, so I won't try, but if you are looking for any kind of funding for any of your services, if we can, we will see what we can do to help. We research for funding that you may have or research for funding that may be available for you or issues you may have. That's what we're here for. We provide you with sensitive information to give you information on low modern income, any diversity population, anything that you need to do with that. So I think that's my, quick down and dirty presentation. But if you have any questions on specific areas, I'd be happy to answer and provide more information. Rick and Brittany, do you have any issue with, that you wanna provide for programs we have? I, I see a bunch of shaking my head.
No, you did a fine job.
I talked bad, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you do, but I think, I think if they've worked with you at all and they, they kinda understand that and know that about you already.
Okay, so Jay has joined me in my office, 'cause his videos aren't working yet. I said I wanted everyone to see his smiley face. So I'm getting my computer. It's not great, sorry, but Jay, hopefully Jay, you guys speak very nicely.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Director of Pathfinders. Humble County, we have, we're worried about the state's budget funding.
Can't hear you, Jay.
What's that?
We can't hear anything.
Okay.
Either he has to talk, or...
We're gonna switch places, yeah.
He's with transportation.
Sorry about that.
Oh, he does the bus stuff?
Now we can. Now they're frozen.
And now they're frozen.
Maybe Jay's just bad luck when it comes to...
We have, uh... We have, we can't...
We have an in-town bus that runs from seven to five every day, do a head start bus. We do managed care organization trips. On the in-town bus, we take people to the grocery store, doctor's appointment, things like that. Hopefully, in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one here, we'll be able to get back to running the bus for Jetco and like works. So even with all the health issues and with COVID, we're still very busy up in Humble County.
So that's pretty much a summary of everything that we do. And I just wanted to see if you had any questions, if there's any concerns that we have or anything we can do to continue to serve you.
I think so. Don't believe there is. Shirley isn't, are you working with Randy Krecklaw on an ordinance change?
No, not right now, we are not.
Okay. I know, he was talking about it. Just what you're gonna get to do. We also need to talk to you about giving an update on the mapping.
Okay, and that, that is one thing I forgot to mention. We do provide... Might still have me, sir. No, no, you're, you're good. We do provide mapping services. We, we provide locations, for, very maps that we've done, zoning maps, we've done the landing map, we've done for various cities their water super map. We've located where signage, for those who go to science laboratories. So we have supervised mapping services that we have available. And we do try, provide back to basement and shift planning, if you have any information or have any interest in...
Okay. I think you were referring to more of the zoning maps. Yeah, we, that's been an ongoing discussion for four years, and we still don't seem to have updated zoning maps.
But hopefully Randy will get that straightened out here soon.
Sounds like he could get some assistance from Midas.
I just, I am working on with... Oh, Shirley, you can mute it. All right, I need to get that, that something. I started by my volume, if you're hearing. We are working with two county and a city updating their zoning ordinances. And that's who's updating their land, current landing map, their zoning map and their future landing map. Otherwise, if it's just the map you want, updating is that all.
Good. Okay.
Well, if there's no other questions, thank you very much for your time. I know, I think maybe you're taking action today to reappoint or reaffirm the appointees to our board and to the various, to our technical assistant committee. I don't know if that's today or not, but if you have any other questions, you know where to find us. We're happy to come and attend, uh, come and attend meetings far away from you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Speaking of appointments, you were on that board, Dave. Okay.
I'll have to change it.
We'll get that, that later on.
That's right. Uh, no, we're gaining on nine o'clock.
Just, just so you know, there's someone on the Zoom, it's the phone number, might wanna ask you that.
Is this seven one two?
No, it's five one five three five one one eight eight four six.
You know, it's...
Just asking. Could you please identify yourself, who that phone number is?
That might have been the guy from Midas or Pathfinder.
Oh, good enough.
Yeah, I couldn't get his video. Yeah, Danny, seven one two.
Do we have information on this discussion of possible action for this, Ayers and Cooney? Is anybody gonna be showing up for that, or is that just something that we need to discuss?
It's just a discussion. It's regarding some law, um, application, or, yeah, application for...
Some law request?
And I did talk to John on this, and he a hundred percent agrees with retaining some help on this. And I spoke to Ann this week, this last week on Friday, I believe it was. And she has guided me in some directions already on what, how to proceed with it. But John feels that, um, um, what did he say? I can't even remember. He thinks that we need to start from the beginning with someone to assist on it instead of jumping in here afterward.
Who's Ann? Who's Ann?
Ann, it's S.M.I.S.E.K. She is the attorney.
Oh, that, yeah. Okay.
And I cannot pronounce it. And she was referred to us by Renee Van Boeford.
Oh, she was?
Yes.
Do we still utilize Renee?
Yes.
Okay, that was my only question when I saw this. I didn't know if we were going different HR.
No. Renee felt it was good to have someone more specified on this. And John would have been here, but he has court at nine, unfortunately.
Another thing I noticed is down here, when, down, later on, it's got Brema County instead of Humboldt County. They screwed that up. Down here, under identification of parties.
Okay, yeah.
That'd be corrected.
Now, do you have anything on the resolution for the farm-to-market construction projects? Or that's just formalities?
That's, yeah, we normally do those two at the beginning of the year.
Nothing?
Nothing, nothing different.
All right.
Hey, do you think people work on the estimator or the loader?
So I read that this is a one-time...
I think it's working right...
Retainer?
I just, we're, we're...
I'm trying to get...
Yes, for this particular situation.
All right. Well, thank you.
It looks like it's gonna be billed hourly.
Do we have any, no, like, what, I mean, this could entail? I mean, I'm curious, it's, yeah, it's two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, we...
It don't take long to rack up... It don't take long to rack up a pretty good amount.
No, it doesn't.
But any other attorneys who work on this will be doing it their hourly rate.
Is it something that's come up that needs assistance from these folks?
Yes, it is. I can't really specify anything on it.
Well, I'm, I'm good with going with Renee's, I mean, Renee was the one that gave you the recommendation. I even did with her recommendation, so.
So I think she does a pretty good job. She just spent inside, so, and took good luck with her so far.
Yeah.
So are we needing a recommendation or, uh?
An action.
An action on this?
Yes.
Yes, we definitely. Make a motion to engage your service with hours, Cooney, attorney. With, with the correction of down here Humboldt County instead of Brema.
So we do have a first and a second on this. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those? Get ready. Is something I need to sign on this or?
Yeah. You wanna do.
It's a credit card number.
Yeah. You wanna put that right up here in your credit card.
Say that again.
You put your credit card number right there.
No, I will not. Well, this is basically Humboldt County, is it not?
Yeah. Yes, it would be. And then put, um, your signature of, what do you call it? And chairperson.
Okay, counts?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, excuse me?
No, Sammy's doing grammar detail on, on the video. You got a little baby in her hands there.
All right. Nice. Well, apparently we've got time to maybe get to the rest of this business.
We have some time.
Cause we've got Amy Whitney at ten, so we should be able to get concluded.
Do you guys want a copy of?
Yes.
Um, the bill?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be nice. But that's kind of a mess anyway. We've been rewriting, rewriting on this.
Hold on.
On that.
I was trying to locate it, isn't it?
State count, I got a question. I see like this, uh, work order that you gave me. Now, it says my copy on it. Do you have one that you want me to sign for you? Or we haven't, we haven't got, I know this is just a request, right? For work being done?
Right. Those are just the recent phone calls that I have taken.
Okay.
And, um, just at, at this point, all I've done is just create a work order.
Okay.
And I have no further instruction on where to go.
Yeah, well, that's, this is why I like to see it. That way I can go out and look at it and then I'll get back with you on it and I'll go okay or say, no, this isn't, shouldn't be done or whatever, so. Yes, I was just double checking how your process works.
Yeah, anything that's handwritten is, is just the information that I've taken, how the landowners, what's the problem, what's the initial problem.
But did they request a work order?
Yes, I think. That's what it looks like. It looks like a request for.
So they have a request for the work order to get someone to get the contractor lined up or look at it if needed?
Right. And that's just it. I can't, I don't know what your protocol is because all I can do is get each one of the supervisors, the information from the landowner and the district and what the problem is. And I don't know if you suggest to me who you prefer as a contractor, who the best contractor is for that area, if anybody's working in the area.
Typically, typically what we do is like, this is for Ed. I'll, uh, look at the project, see if it should be done or not, and then I'll ask Ed, who do you prefer to work on your land? Cause some farmers don't like some other people, you know, or whatever.
Right.
They prefer someone else do the work.
Or sometimes if you have knowledge of the contractors and the, the scope of the work, you can contact said contractor. And, and usually the biggest thing is the expediency, how quick can somebody get to?
We might have somebody who's just working a couple miles away and could slip over and do it, so.
Right. And that's where, if, if I handwrite all the information prior to printing everything up, I can give you the copies and then I can wait for some instruction.
I think we can help you with that starting out. And I strongly suggest as we get things rolling into this calendar year, we might even request a meeting of the contractors, not just for all of us, but for Kim's sake as well, to help, uh, facilitate who gets assigned the work orders.
Yep, and the process we, we're going to go together.
I'm, I am a visualist, so if I had a map like that, that I could have like flags saying, you know, Marsa's in this area, Myers in this area, Peterson's in this area, and something comes in, then that is something that I could discuss prior to actually calling another contractor when you've got somebody that's a bit of a mile away.
But that's hard because they also have lots of private stuff that they're doing. So if they have like a group of work orders over here, they still might be over northwest or east.
Yeah, we're kind of touched on sometimes, I think, just getting up to speed, this isn't bad, cause we, having done this for a while, and Trish too, have more of a knowledge of the contractors and what they can do and how quick they can get to it. You know?
Well, and I realize you might be working on a major project, but it's not feasible for you to get there for six months.
That's right.
And you've got another contractor that may be more able to do small jobs that can't handle large contracts.
Right, exactly.
So that it'll take me a while to learn, you know, who's capable and, um, like we had discussed last week, where you may have somebody that is experienced with dredging a ditch and somebody else comes along and has never trenched before. And does a horrible job. So it, it's just a matter of getting me up to speed on background knowledge of who's better at certain things, who's, who's able to be contacted to do an immediate job, you know, just, there's a lot to learn.
Does that make sense? I mean, to tell, help Kim out, get rolling?
Yeah.
That, kind of what you, like you gave to Rick and gave to me on some of these, who do you contact type? And then say, this would be the person to contact, cause they'd be the person that would do the scope of the work.
Right.
Yeah.
But they also discuss when someone is given a job or a work order, if they haven't started it in a certain amount of time, that we would reassess and possibly reassign because we aren't gonna allow them to afford it.
Right, exactly. And you have to be careful of that, won't mention any names, but these contractors like to have this litany of work, like Rose said, in front of them.
Fulfillment, yeah.
They take forever to get there. And we know you can't always fix everything the next day, but I believe a couple of years ago, we put a work order in on work orders of the year.
Yeah, to review it every year.
Yeah. I mean, if there's something on the book, so to speak, been assigned, and we, and Trish has always been good when we've asked to get us an updated list of work orders. And that kind of tells you who's been assigned. And if it's not, if it's still on the books, you can kind of see when it was assigned, what it is, and they haven't got it fixed, you can contact them. You can or we can. And say, what's the holdup here?
The holdup and why aren't we getting?
Because, you know, there's been too many that probably all of us have been called out to, to, gosh, you look at this, there hasn't been a work order on this for two years.
Yeah.
It's a broken tile or, uh, whatever. And no one showed up and you look, well, yep, it's a work order and that, and the contractor just spaced it off or stockpiled the work orders. Yeah, so.
Right.
We're on the right track, I think, helping Kim get up speed. And I think you'll get to a point where you'll know, like you said, when someone calls in, what it is, what they're up to, who will first and best contractor to contact.
Right. And like the one issue that I presented today is somebody has a private tile installed, they've already received the bill from the excavating company.
Yep.
And now they're asking us to pay for a portion that the county would normally pay for.
With no work order.
No knowledge of this.
So I told Kim on that one.
Free existing work order, even knowing who was out there.
They didn't ask when they're out doing it and would have been perfectly fine to get the work order to fix a surface drain while they were there. So I am going to call the contractor and say, there's not really disagreement that this is a drainage district repair, but there's a big problem of not having a work order.
It's like somebody showing up and shingling your house because it needed it.
Yep.
Exactly.
But I didn't really ask you to do it.
I mean, they came and they were putting siding on and while they were there, they shingled the house.
Yeah.
Somebody else had to pay for the shingles.
Right.
So, I mean, that's the stuff you gotta look at.
And I think that was a case where the contractor said, hey, you might want to check with the county, they pay for part of this, wasn't that the one?
Yeah. But they should have done that while they were out there and said, if you give me a work order on this and it's good to go, we can sure fix it while we're here. No one's gonna argue with that for the expediency, but.
Calling.
It doesn't take much.
Just the notify, notification that, hey, we're out here doing this, um, the guy also said that it is a surface intake fix.
Yep.
At least somebody has knowledge of it.
And we wanna kind of stem this tide because we ran into this private work being done. Oh, and by the way, I've been waiting on this, and it is legitimate district tile repair. And it's been a year and no one fixes it. Hey, why don't you go over and fix that? This is a guy, there's already an existing work order. The guy just goes over and fixes it and sends it, and that's not, you know, without getting prior approval, checking with the existing contractor, says, no, that's fine, I'm not gonna get there for another year. You're done, this guy has it, go ahead and fix it.
Yeah.
But you've got Marsa's good about, if there's a repair and he goes out there and there's more calling in and saying, hey, we have other issues too. So I will say he's.
And so, and, and I think he would, he wasn't on this particular project.
No.
If he sees us a district repair, getting a work order and then fixing it.
Very familiar with the project.
I'll get that off to Kim and I think we need to have a work session with her on this so she knows where she's at, we know where we're at, we know where she's at.
And like I say, hurt to invite the contractors coming in, we'll be sitting in on it too so they can, and plus get to meet her face to face.
This notice was published August twentieth of two thousand nineteen by Trish stating, any work done within the Humboldt County Drainage District must obtain a work order from the Drainage Clerk or office staff prior to beginning any work on any project. So is this some, I mean, this is something that needs to be brought to the forefront of all the contractors and so.
Again, apparently.
Yeah.
And I know each of you have, you know, you have personal contact with the residents of your districts and the landowners. And it might be easy to say, oh, yeah, hey, I was talking to my buddy, you know, he owns this company, I used to be in the area, you gotta go ahead and have him come out. But, yeah, they've got to be, just reiterate to them, you've got to keep a civil loop tight. We've gotta have a, a work order created. Not that we're gonna, you know, disapprove of the person that you're picking to do the work on your land, but we've gotta know ahead of time.
But on the flip side, and you mentioned it earlier, we may, from prior knowledge.
Right. You know of somebody that's gonna be really quick, you know, go ahead and do it, you know it's gonna be.
What their capabilities and scope of work are, you hit, touched on that, and so, uh, that, yeah, I think Dave's right, Rick's right, we're all right. Try to have a, a work session, maybe that can entail getting the contractors in. I mean, it's for their benefit as well. For their work.
They all have email that they respond to or do they, some of them not, some of them do?
Some of them not. Honestly, I text.
Text messages.
I text a lot of stuff to them because they'll be out somewhere and say, can you send me a map of that again? So I'll screen, shot a picture of it, send it to them. I check on their status that way. I'm like, where are you, what are you doing? Um, just, and let them know that so-and-so called and I try to do it that way. Some of them don't have that capability.
I was just wondering that, that notification that Chris has, has mentioned, should we re-mail that once a year? So they're constantly reminded that every year, first of the year, reminder that you will need to have a work order before.
And I, you know.
I think it'd just be an easy thirty-five cents or whatever it's standing.
Exactly. I think it costs more than that.
I think it'll cost, I think it'll cost, I just buy about a forty-two.
That's a very good idea to, it just saves a lot of confusion for everybody.
Yeah.
Is there ever a time that a work order does not get pre-approved or a work order created, there's work done that should have been a simple, you know, maybe an outlet cleanout that turned into several thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah.
That was not pre-planned?
Oh, yeah.
So is, do you ever get to the point where you do not approve additional?
Well, that is where, along with the notification of saying, and the contractors have gotten better through some of the notification, this expecting, we'll just use round numbers, a two thousand dollar repair bill. And they get out there and they see it's gonna be ten thousand dollars because it's more than they thought. Stop, call somebody, they can call it, and someone can look at it. We've done that several times. And then there's no surprise.
Right. So if that would happen, say you've got a contractor that just does real small like cleanouts.
Right.
And now your two thousand dollar project had turned into ten or twelve thousand, is there ever a time that you say, okay, you stop what you're doing as a contractor on this and we need to hire somebody else that can handle the bigger project? Do you ever split a work order between two contractors?
We haven't had that in the past, to my knowledge.
Not usually, but we've had, that's why it's imperative that if they, if this is something bigger.
Yeah, we've had things that were gonna be a simple little tile repair that have turned into larger projects.
Whether uncovered a bigger hole.
Yeah, you know, they start digging, they find out, oh geez, this is a mess.
Pictures are worth a thousand.
Well, and the communication back to, hey, I got a work order to fix a broken tile, which would be a thousand bucks, and I got out here and I found, well, there's fifty feet of broken tile. And that's gonna be, you know, quite a bit more. That could be along with the notice sent out, just as a reminder.
Right.
Basically just communication, yeah.
Right, and, and I guess if I'm going to be in charge of this, um, I need to have communication because I would be lost constantly calling somebody saying, where are we on this? What, what's happening with this? And not knowing what is going on.
Well, I can see a lot of this resolved with the work session with the contractors.
Yeah. So they know, so they know what you expect of them.
We all expect of them.
Right.
And it's a good time to do it, cause we're, yeah. So let's, let's work towards that. Dave, I'll check on your beaver situation. So.
Yeah, I didn't.
I got, I got the information, so I just, there again, that's.
Right.
Will get you up to speed.
Right.
Just keep asking.
My, exactly, in my handwritten copies, since I'll attach a map to the map of those, then I'll have room to just add additional notes as needed, and then once we, once we file or receive the actual invoicing and the claims are paid, then I can file everything away and it'll have all my notes in it.
Perfect. All right. Well, moving along, so thanks, Kim, for the good question. Um, need to appoint a chairman and a vice chairman for the calendar year of twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rick Peterson as chairman. Bruce Reimer as vice chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess.
Well, there you go. Motion carried.
You said that.
Now, here's the fun part.
Make a motion to, uh, designate the Humboldt Independent as official county newspaper for calendar year twenty twenty-one.
I would second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Humboldt Independent is, if you like to tackle the mileage rate for this year.
Did we go fifty-five last year?
I think we bumped it to fifty-five.
Fifty-five for the past.
And I think that it should be fine because it, fuel hasn't done nothing.
So am I hearing fifty-five cents?
I'll go with fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, fifty-five cents for the mileage, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? How about setting meal reimbursement rate? I don't even know what it is today.
We bumped it up last year, did we not?
Do we have information on that?
I don't think anybody's even used it. We haven't had it.
Fifty per day on the meal reimbursement?
There was a tip that we allowed, um, just as part of the whole total thing.
What's that, Sandy?
Um, we allowed to have the tip be a part of that total fifty dollars, tips included.
Tips included, but a maximum of fifty dollars a day on meals?
Right, that's what we did last year.
That's what it was, is what it says here.
Okay. Does that say tips included for fifty dollars?
Well, I didn't, I didn't range it out in tips.
Oh.
I believe it was.
Including the tip for physical year twenty twenty-one.
Okay, well, mine's nineteen, so that's how many scratches I've had on it.
Fifty dollars a day including the tip.
I'll, I'll second Dave's motion.
All right. The first and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are fifty dollars including tips, it is. Uh, that works. Those tips.
I'll make the motion to authorize the auditors to pay certain bills for, for both male and female.
That's a broad statement, but we know what certain bills allude to.
Salaries, payroll, previously approved by the board, insurance payments, unemployment, quarterly payment, emergency expenses deemed necessary by the county auditor.
Thank you.
Sounds very good.
That was just basically Peggy said last year that if it's gonna cost us something for not getting it done, it's a lot easier to have her, have the ability to do that as I recall it. So I would agree. Did Sandy make that one?
Yes, she did.
Okay, so we have a first and a second on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Is that always the lady?
That's, that's rundown.
Let's finish up. Uh, we have a resolution twenty twenty-one dash one that is concerning the farm-to-market construction projects.
It sounds like, uh, Ben said that's just what we do every year, so I'll make a motion for the twenty twenty-one dash one for farm-to-market projects.
I would second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? True. And the next resolution is the twenty twenty-one dash two, which authorizes the county engineer to close roads for repairs.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Um, any discussion?
I would say that Ben does a pretty good job for that on keeping people notified that I'm gonna close.
Yep.
Dutch Park Road for crossing Thursday morning, and they do a good job getting it to camp or to the radio, so I think doing the way they've done it has worked, so.
Excellent. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? True. Um, if we wanna go backwards, uh, we need to make appointments to the magistrate appointing commission. Show the prior members, so.
I have a question on that. Is that the prior members, is Peggy off that or is she?
I would assume she's off of that. But I'm not sure.
Does that mean you're taking that place, or, I mean, I'm curious, I don't know.
Does it have to be the auditor, or she just did it because she wanted to?
That is a very good question, I don't know.
Well, we're gonna sit here until we find out. I don't have a clue, I, and I didn't know when I read that if that meant she was volunteering to do it, or if she had done it because she was the auditor.
I think she volunteered to do it.
Probably. And my question is, is this, uh, commission, do they ever make appointments, it says magistrate and appointing commission, is it something they, that even happens very often?
Probably not.
Do we need to touch base with Cheryl Reed and Brian?
To see if they will do it?
To see if that's.
Well, I tell you what, I'll make a motion to reappoint these people with their approval. How about them?
With?
I mean, just these three that are there.
Just the three that are currently there?
Yeah.
Yep, that's a good idea, Rick, I'll second that.
And if we have some issues with it, we'll have to address it.
Add or subtract members.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, along with the discussion on that, Trish, can you check with all three of these folks sometime in the near future?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
I think I'll answer your phone call right off the bat.
I, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm thinking it's something they don't meet or do much very often.
I don't think so, a lot of these things are just necessities in case there's a...
Because I don't know that they make a lot of appointments to the magistrate.
No, I'm, I'm gonna guessing, the only reason it's there is if we have a change partway through the year.
Yep. Okay. So any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good motion. Um, well, let's see if we can tackle fire two, fires two ten, uh, various boards that we are all on.
Eric's with on that advisory board, the care chief, no, no.
I still am. Bruce, there's my list here.
Right here.
Trish, I never received a list, did somebody email once to me real quick?
Um, yeah.
I'm just using last year's list, Sandy.
Actually, I don't have that later.
Okay.
Are you sending it to us?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to take a picture of it.
Okay.
And I will see if I can.
I can.
Oh, really, go ahead, that'd be great, thank you.
I'm not worried about it.
I hope he can read it.
Okay. I'll get my iPad and we'll be there.
Bill Fair, representative of P T with, uh, Bruce.
Mm-hmm. Has that ever lost anything?
I've never been called on it.
Pretty good thing to yell at them.
Yeah.
Who is on the board of health?
Health is my...
Dave.
Dave? All right, Dave?
Yep. That's a good one.
Uh, I happen to serve on the building families board, I will maintain that.
I'm on the juvenile detention as well as the seafarer, and I'll do both of those.
Uh, community and family resources is Bruce.
I will workforce development, Beth?
No.
Okay, which one did you say? I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, we, uh...
The next one. What did you call it?
Did you get my text, Sandy?
Community and family resources board, Bruce is, Bruce, am I saying this correctly? You're on community and family resources board, correct? Yeah, Bruce is on that one. Who is, uh, dealing with concerned citizens?
That was Eric.
Oh, they're all concerned, that's me?
On the juvenile board, I was an alternate.
Yep.
Still need an alternate?
Well, they like to have you as, or, every county has two people.
I'll be the alternate on that again.
Which one's that, Dave?
Juvenile detention.
Okay. So, who is on the county social services board?
And that's...
Sandy?
I'll be on, well, yeah, we have social service until, um, you know, then we'll go rolling hills, and then I'm also on the Iowa workforce and, um, homework housing and trust fund committee.
Lord.
Okay. Sandy, aren't you also on the daycare advisory commission?
Yes, I was just going through, that was my, yeah, daycare, I'm on the daycare advisory commission, um...
Did you say department of human services government, governance board?
That's you.
That's me?
That's you.
I don't think I'm on that one.
Okay, well, I'll stay on there because, uh, apparently they never have any meetings.
You're also on the daycare advisory.
I will stay on that one because I wouldn't wish that on anybody else. The enterprise zone commission?
That's Rick and I.
Rick and Bruce. Uh, do you anything on that?
No.
I'm never, okay.
All right.
Midas or the new...
The HIPAA committee.
Do we have a HIPAA committee representative?
Sandy.
Sandy?
I think I'm on that one too.
Yep.
Okay.
I forgot to bring my briefcase with me, that had everything, let me start off that guy.
That's all right, we'll just fill your Damon and then they can be blanks.
Homeboard housing trust fund committee?
That one I'm on.
Sandy's on that one.
Sandy's on that one, okay.
Interfited zone commission, that was Rick and Bruce.
Yeah.
What about, uh, that's me with Bruce, he loves that board.
Oh, yeah.
Development association is Rick.
That's me.
Nine one one and...
We, I will...
That has been a chairman in the past, and I think we need to keep Eric on this because we had the issue where it's kinda like the, the health insurance, you just get to figure stuff out and then you switch.
And there will be, uh, yeah, as long as you appoint me from the board supervisor side, uh, we will have a very easily technicality on the nine one one board side so that that is, that is official.
Okay. I'm still weary of nine one one.
Yeah. That is, there's nothing that needs to be done as long as you appoint me for that.
Did that change, or also was the EMA then?
No, that...
Still the chairman then?
No, it, uh, isn't really written in those bylaws, but it just, it's, there again, what Rick just mentioned, the continuity of these boards, so it doesn't change every year.
So you're gonna do that?
I will maintain emergency management.
Awesome. Homeboard housing trust fund, is that still Sandy?
Is that the Humboldt County Housing Development Board?
That's Sandy and Rick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
There's a home word.
One of us is the regular one, I can't remember which one it is, Rick.
The trust fund, I think I'm, I've been on that one for the last year.
I'm on the Humboldt County Housing Development Board, I'm on that one.
And Sandy the alternate then to that?
Dave, you come to that one, don't you?
I've been going to that one, they said.
Maybe Sandy doesn't have, Sandy's not on?
I've been going.
Yeah, I, I don't know why that switched, but that's, well, actually, it used to be me and Carl, so you probably took Carl's spot.
I think, and that's why I got put on as the alternate, Carl was on it.
So that Humboldt County Housing Development Board is Rick and Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll stay on the landfill.
Your favorite.
I'm an alternate on that.
And I'll stay on the drainage district.
Hey, I just remembered, I should've said this, um, county social service and Dave is the alternate.
Who's the alternate?
Dave.
Dave? Make note of that, Dave.
I'll look for it.
County social services.
You get an audit, money here, where am I at?
That's clear at the top.
Yeah, and so what?
The Iowa governmental healthcare planning committee.
I don't even know what that is.
I have no idea. Who's on it?
Dave and Rick.
Okay. No wonder I don't know what's going on.
I understand healthcare.
So what's, who else to be on that?
Was that for insurance, evidently? Yeah, that's me then.
Rick.
That is, that is you, Rick.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've been on that one.
Dave's alternate?
I'm still trying to catch up here.
L E C, you're on board?
Yeah.
It's Rick and I.
Eric and I.
What is the L E P C?
Don't know.
I don't know what an L E P C is.
Who's, who's on it right now?
You.
Okay.
I'm doing a good job.
I must be doing a great job, I'm not entirely sure what it is.
I'm on the ministerial association.
Dave's, I'm going by the new list, Midas Executive Regional Board, now Pathfinder's, Dave?
And I'll do the landfill and four dodge.
You've been on that forever, haven't you, Rick?
Yeah.
Region five has that team.
Dave and I.
Dave and Bruce. Uh, I'm on the second judicial district correctional service board, I will maintain that. Small business development board.
That's Sandy.
I was just, I think I'm on that, I don't know if it's been on that.
Yep. Uh, supported employment admissions committee.
That's Rick.
Doesn't look like a real often.
Well, that's not very often.
The U D M O board, I'm guessing is Bruce?
Yeah.
And, uh, workforce development.
That's Sandy.
Sandy's.
Yeah.
That is what I have for the, oh, wait a minute, make sure I'm not missing anything. Does that cover everything that everybody sees?
A few more on the next page. Well, that's...
It's different.
It looks like we both.
I made a motion to appoint those as...
Listed?
Listed, yeah.
I'll second Bruce's motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's our board.
I would also request the new list on that because mine has got two years of scratching and changing, so.
That should be in next week's minutes.
Yep.
All right, so we've got that done. No major changes, um...
Conservation board. Conservation board.
Say this again now. So the next one, this one we're looking at.
Yeah, you want me to grab another book?
Well, so the chairman of the board of supervising honored the courthouse committee for calendar year 2021. The conservation zoning board of adjustment, homeward trust, veterans affair board.
I'm on the veterans affair.
Yeah, do we have last year's?
We gotta reappoint one, don't we?
Is there any, you have any information on this from last year?
I don't remember this.
Yeah, Dave's on the veterans affair board. Uh, do we have anything to do with these other ones?
Well, I imagine we would, uh.
Conservation board?
Would we appoint oddly to the conservation board? No.
I don't, this was curious to me. Bruce, do you see anything in the last minutes?
Last year on that, we had, uh, TC Loving was the conservation board for a five-year term. That was two, yeah, 2021.
Zoning board?
Zoning board was John Myers.
And these people's.
Tired though.
John Hall, though.
I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, he retired, so we gotta reappoint somebody.
They're still, we're still been working. That's an ongoing open position.
Right.
Board of adjustment, is that full?
Well.
Um, yes, I think, I don't think we need anybody on yet.
How about the homeward housing trust fund committee? Is somebody on that?
Um, Cheryl Reed used to do that.
Yeah, Cheryl Reed, that's the one that I'm on.
We reappointed Carl last year.
Right.
Was it Carl that we did?
We reappointed him last year, so. And I don't think we need anybody on the veterans affairs. Maybe next year.
Do they have a full board?
Just three of us. Merlin Glass and, uh. We reappointed him last year. And I reappointed, reappointed two years ago. And, uh, Kirk paper was appointed three years ago, I think it is.
Which board is that?
So we're looking for the conservation board if we need.
I don't think we need to appoint anyone for that.
Loving was a five-year term.
Five-year term.
Okay, so that one's.
If somebody's going off of that one, it could be up. Because that's a five-member board.
Bob Rasmussen.
Bob Rasmussen.
Tate Saturn.
Tate Saturn was a five-year term in 19. So.
Well, I imagine they can come back to us and say, hey, we need a new person. We have to appoint it.
TC Loving was appointed last year, so let them be. Who else is on that one? Minor, Mary Minor and, uh. Bruce or, I can't remember who else is on that board. Probably has to be reappointed. I think that's a five-member board.
Didn't they have given us the?
Yeah, they probably should have.
I think I agree with Rick.
Let's ask Trish to call them and have them put it on next meeting.
If they need official appointment, we're fine. Uh, we all do know that the zoning board is looking for another member.
Gotcha.
You figured it out?
Maybe. Tate Saturn was 14, should have been 19. He was redating for a five-year. This hasn't been updated. Um. TC Love, that's 20, be Mary Minor, I believe.
She'll be up.
Yeah.
Somebody's pretty good.
Yeah, it is.
Really, without recommendation from their board, though, we can't throw somebody on there without.
We just need to make sure that we have someone that we can put into, we have to get the word out to them that you need somebody and we can.
Okay.
Recommendations and put that together.
Well, Trish, you, uh, request their nominee for this conservation board.
Okay.
Who would, who they want appointed.
What I want.
If Mary wants to do it again, then it's fine, but we need a name.
Okay, gotcha.
We're all working on that.
We're also working on the zoning.
Yep.
Positions. My guy said no, so.
Well, the, my guy, first guy that I thought would be good, like you, I'm pretty sure is a no. He didn't give me a definite no, but I'm guessing it's a no. So when I get that, I do have a.
Alternate?
Maybe. I think we just have to kind of go down the list of.
Who's off?
Uh.
John Myers went off.
John Myers.
Okay.
On the zoning board, he retired.
And that's Ben, isn't it? Or?
Paul Jacobson.
And he was reappointed last year, so somebody be on there to fill out his term. It'll be another four years.
Correct. But how about the board of adjustment? We were requesting that, if there is.
Okay.
Now, this is an old.
Yeah.
Harvey Lawrence would be reappointed.
Two.
So we actually need two for the zoning board, sort of hearing?
No, we need one for the zoning board to fill out John.
Just one to fill out John, okay.
And then somebody would be reappointed, if somebody's son would be appointed, from that board, it's every five years.
Yeah, so we need two then.
So we need two. One to go on and one to reappoint.
That's for zoning?
Mm-hmm.
This might be a little. That's the one then.
This is not.
Zoning. Do you get a list of the board of adjustment, the zoning numbers now? There you have it.
Should, but.
So later, one is 2018, so it's not current. Which you got more, that's why I'm there, too.
Let me see, where do we go here first?
She's gonna shut the, we gotta put a sign up there. Morning, David.
Hey, Trish?
Yeah.
We have to put a sign up there that's an open meeting.
Put a sign on the door to, to, to shut.
That better? Sorry about that.
I'll, I'll leave this just posted, so somebody does.
Yeah, I was gonna.
There you go. We do it all the time.
You don't tell me you have tape in your drawer.
I haven't asked you to tape. Here it is, right underneath your.
Gotta find the right thing.
Oh, thank you.
It's on the inside.
So, where are that and all the other stuff? Shit, like, check, check. See, we know we need a member for the zoning board. Don't know, I guess, check with these boards. Uh, I know for sure, the board of adjustment.
Have a list of who's up.
Right.
Who was, what year they was appointed.
We don't have a current list.
Should be.
I know it, don't have.
What they needed last year.
Well.
If you ask what year they was reappointed.
For zoning and we gotta do conservation, or did you go ahead with that?
No, we need to ask conservation who they want appointed to that.
Right.
If, if Mary wants to.
Okay.
Be on it again.
And you need two for zoning, one. Board of adjustment, did we?
Can I see who's up, who's applied, what's up?
Um.
I think it would be either Harley or Lawrence, but I'm not sure.
Are you on the board of adjustment, Dave?
Is Tim off?
No, at least the one, Denver, he's on there.
Would have been on that, well.
Louis on it, too?
Louis.
Well, Louis was 2020, let's see. Tim was, so it would be Lawrence, I believe.
Lawrence, yeah.
Do we check with him again?
Yeah.
Check with him.
We'll just have to move, can I move?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Get the confirmation if there's any members that need to be added, and like Rick said, check with the boards. I would think that conservation would want to.
Strongarm the paper and that way we can see if anybody would be interested in serving them on some of these boards. Because that's the only way we get it out there, other than walking around asking.
Yep.
So.
So the homeward housing trust fund committee, what did we come up with on that one? So that kind of. Well, that's what I'm wondering.
That's on the front. Sandy's our person on there.
Yeah.
So we got that taken care of, I would guess.
Carl is on for last year, appointed on that. And.
It doesn't say anything about time. It just says calendar.
Calendar year.
So it must do it every year then. So we'll, I'll ask, let's, yes, call Carl, see if he'll do it again, put it that way.
Okay.
If not, could Sandy be on that?
I think Sandy's automatically on it.
She's automatically on it.
And Dave thinks veterans affair is good?
I think so.
Okay.
Well. Basically, we just need a little confirmation on the.
Couple of the positions, board. So now we have to be eminent domain board that we're, uh.
Because these other things have been taken care of.
Yep. So are we gonna just wait until we get confirmation to even do anything on this?
Yeah.
So we're gonna table that. We're gonna table the, these, one, two, three, four, five.
I'll move to table those appointments, those appointments that we're checking on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? We'll get more information and then finish that up. Does that cover all, is this eminent domain board everybody listed here?
Yeah.
Do we just, uh, put the ones that are on there?
Yeah, that's what I said, just put them.
Put them on there, and if they decide that they aren't wanting to serve in that board, we'll have to appoint someone else.
Yeah.
Yep.
Make a motion to appoint the board, eminent domain board as printed, um, from our list here for all the categories.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All, uh, as listed. Now we have a personnel policy update committee.
Is that on from last year? Who's on the?
I don't know. Personnel update committee, county attorney, auditor, auditor's payroll deputy, recorder, treasurer, sheriff, county engineer, safety director, conservation, and assessor, and supervisor.
I'm guessing that that supervisor was, uh, the chairman?
Probably.
So.
What's new last year?
Make a motion.
Did this ever meet?
I don't know, but it says here that, uh, county attorney, county auditor, county auditor's payroll deputy, county recorder, county treasurer, county sheriff, county engineer, safety director, conservation director, assessor, and supervisor. And it says supervisor leading for life here.
Would you like to stay on there?
That's fine.
Okay.
Dave?
Never met, so.
I guess there's not a big.
But I think they started updating the book.
That's what I was gonna say. I thought that's what the process was.
I think we add the person on there.
Right. So leave that on with Dave's name on it. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it before Dave changes his mind.
Okay. Good. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? There you have it. All right.
Let's just get them, make sure we get those three or four positions.
Yeah, just that one block there, we gotta check on.
Okay.
Well.
Maybe what, maybe what would help with on those boards, that we get a list of their current and then how they flow.
Order of terms.
Order of terms and how they, when they are on, when they are off, so we can know next year that whoever.
Yeah, actually, when you get everything updated.
It'd be nice if Dave supplied the name.
Yeah. Then just kind of get us a whole updated sheet, like, unless we've got every.
They did all these.
Oh.
I got this.
Can I use that for?
Yes, you can. Yep, this, take, you got this for me, well, the only problem is, the most current year is 18. Yes, you can use this and.
Okay, okay.
If you can update that here in the near future and give a copy to all of us, it's kind of handy, like Bruce said, to know.
Yeah.
Who's on what boards and when the term expires and all that fun.
This is the minute from last year, and he did, and he set all of the lists, all the boards and everything.
This was, uh, for the other extracurricular ones, too, Dave. Not just us, but for the other board. Okay.
If they don't have a conservation board, they don't have, they, uh, zoning or order of adjustment on there.
Yeah, because that thing, I think, that needs to be updated, too, so.
Yeah, our, our gray book hasn't been updated, apparently.
The domain board.
Generally, it is, but.
We should have the other one, but.
Well, we have Jamie and Alyssa, and I don't want to make them mad and get them.
No, go ahead. Yeah, they're gonna, basically, they give us an update?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You can, well, whatever.
What do we talk to Warren?
Have the letter that we sent? Hmm. I think you can.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning.
Hope everyone had a good New Year's and Christmas.
I was just kind of getting into that four-day work week. I mean, I'm too tired of being that national.
Every couple of weeks, actually.
Every couple of weeks, if you are.
Okay, this is our, uh, this is our annual report that we do every year for you and bring to you for, um, to also request at the time, uh, any, any, um, contribution you'd like to make towards, um, upper domain and services. And Humboldt County seems to overall be one of the, um, busiest counties we have for even based in an honest reality. We are constantly, something's always going on here for, for good purposes, so, um, we, in comparison to last year, you see in the front one with the letter there, um, in comparison to last year, we were actually down 17 clients, um, but we're up eight, eight households, so, which is really interesting. So obviously, the number of people in the household is decreasing slightly, um, but, um, that's not anything out of the ordinary. Um, I, in looking at that number, it doesn't seem like there was really much change, but in actuality, when you take into summer months, which is the month that we usually see a decline in services because people are out and out more, um, this year, COVID has made it pretty stagnant and it kept across the board. So, um, we actually, even though we saw a decline, it still balances out with the whole numbers from last year. Um, what we did see last year was actually there was an increase in the usage of, of funding that way for the county. Um, expenditures in, in Humboldt County alone of $114,525 for upper domain, and I'll talk about that here in a little bit with you. Um, the one report I like out of all of these, I mean, the demographics are nice. It tells you what populations are being served and what, what, what the population looks like overall, that's getting services in your county. Um, but the one with the blue bars on the back. Um, but the one with the blue bars on the back is really the one that tells us a lot. Um, last year, obviously, and the theme should be consistent with every year, and jump in, Alyssa, um, as we move forward here, um, the biggest one is the emergency energy services, and what we mean by that is the light heat, and also the ESIP money that we put, um, in, in the county. Um, it's up to two hundred and five thousand seventy-six, um, serving seven hundred and seventy-five households overall, which is quite impressive, so... The other one that we note, obviously, is the food program, and that continues to be an on-growing program for, um, for the county, and that one, um, is up at the expenditures of twenty thousand dollars, which is quite impressive. Um, one that we do see climbing, and this isn't just with Humboldt, but, um, you are one of the larger, more rural counties that uses this, is the housing services. I do wanna point out that as we float down to special projects, which is pretty typical, and remember, that's for Thanksgiving meals, that's for Christmas, um, those are the kind of things, back to school, those are the kind of things that we do with the special projects here. But the one I wanted to note to you is weatherization. Uh, weatherization, when COVID began in March, um, was suspended statewide. It was considered, um, and declared a nonessential ser, uh, service at that time, and because of that, then they focused their attentions on other programming. Um, we did start back, oh, it was in October, September, I think it was in September, and it's just been gangbusters since then, um, getting back out there, and, and the guys, um, and the guys working in the office have been able to increase production probably about a hundred and thirty percent. So, they're really getting out there and picking up where they had left off, um, because they weren't allowed to be able to go out and work during that time, or to get the state suspension. One of the things I wanted to note to you is that this is somewhat of a unique year, and I have something different, I usually don't provide, um, and we're going to from this point forward, is our revenues and expenditure statement that, um, for your county through that same fiscal year. I compared it to last year. The interesting thing about this report is, uh, we look at prior years, but when we look at the current year, if you look at just the revenues alone, you see they've increased significantly. And that's, that's been the story for all of our counties, um, the donations have gone up significantly, there either private, or their county, or, um, what we've gotten from the federal and state government through the CARES Act, so, that's been quite impressive. Now, this is just the operations for outreach here in this county. What I do wanna point out then is, if you look down below, we were able to, um, and I don't like, I use this term loosely, because we're, we're obviously a not-for-profit, but we are still in the black as far as our expenditures are in comparison to last year. What we were able to do is, when COVID hit in March, we were approached by our bank in April and May, and Upper Des Moines, I think I told you guys this, did I not, about a PPP loan, maybe I didn't, huh, my memory is getting short.
I think I've heard that somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway, we filed for a PPP loan, um, payroll protection loan, and, um, we were granted, uh, a little under one point two million dollars. Now, it sounds impressive, but remember, we still get grant monies, we still have to spend that grant money down, we didn't change the rules on the grant, and, which means that if we, we had to spend as much as that as we would a typical year. So, we had to play games with that a little bit, and what we did was obvi, the obvious program that we funded right away was my goal, and this all happened, is I was not gonna unemployed anybody, and that was really important for us. So, the weatherization guys turned into maintenance guys, and helped out wherever they helped out, and they did it willingly, and really enjoyed doing it. Um, so, we used that PPP money to cover their salaries when there was no more support money left to cover them. The other efforts that we did is we targeted then specific programs like outreach, and used a portion of the payroll monies and the fringe benefits to cover their salaries, then loosened up that money to pay it into services, and increased the amount of CSBG you can put into, into your county. So, all told, um, through, um, that interim of about six months, a little, little over six months, um, we were able to save about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we returned the rest of the PPP to the bank for them to distribute out to other, other small businesses that needed it. And then what we did was, we were able to, as a matter of fact, we're in the middle of the process, uh, write the application and the paperwork for forgiveness, and then they write that off, so, we were able to save additional monies in that. So, we were able to save money, uh, um, redirect some of the expenses so that we remained in the black for pretty much all of our outreach, and kept that going, and been running as smoothly as we could, so, um, which is a good thing for everybody. Um, we did receive over this year, and we're gonna really be seeing the numbers when I come back to you at, um, around April and May, when we look at the half-year for this new year we're in, where you're gonna see a lot of that influx of money that we've got on the, um, CARES Act money, and we received CARES Act money with CSBG, we received it with, um, our light heat program, um, received it for our Head Start program, but we don't provide that here in this, in this county, and, I'm trying to think of whatever.
Housing?
Yeah, and we, yeah, that's, that was incredible, the housing one. So, and if you know people who need housing, they should send them our way, because we were, uh, ingratiating quite a large amount. We went from a hundred and forty-eight thousand now to, um, we're now close to seven hundred thousand dollars. We were able to bring in, um, not just in CARES money, but housing money all over, so...
Question on housing money, so, when you say housing money, what does that, uh, carry off?
Primarily, it's primarily ESG or Emergency Solutions Grant Money, which provides temporary assistance to those who are at risk of becoming homeless because of...
Addiction.
Addiction or whatever, and we...
So, it could be IE rental payments if they're renting property, or...
Right, they may be getting addicted or whatever, and we can help them in their back, their back rents and things like that, if they...
Does it help people who own their homes who can't make payments?
We do not do foreclosure, unfortunately, and we were lucky enough, believe it or not, in that program, it's called EFP, they started that one about five months ago, and we worked with IFA, Iowa Finance Authority, to do that part in our area, and between, in the state of Iowa, they were able, just in addition to the loan, twenty-five million dollars went out to help, um, with, um, rent in the state. It's an incredible amount of money, and that doesn't even include the foreclosures that they helped to stop from happening too. And, mind you, back to what you were asking, the important piece to that is they have to have been affected by COVID. In other words, either lost their job, laid off temporarily, reduction in, in hours, or whatever it might be, and they have to prove to us that they, that happened to them, and it usually is pretty easy to...
Yeah, they can have either tested positive too, so, if they tested positive and had to be off for the quarantine time, we can help on that COVID-related, if their childcare was lost due to COVID, or school closing, um, because of COVID, or a child sent home from school because they have to quarantine. Anything that's COVID-related, so it's pretty broad, um, but if they can prove that, then... But the ESG too can help outside of COVID-related issues.
Well, housing, to answer the question, is primarily rental payments. It's not, like Grace said, it's not someone buying their home, unable to make payments.
Strictly COVID, COVID addiction, yeah.
It's strictly someone still renting an apartment or a home, or whatever, so, but it...
Or currently homeless, or they're currently living on the streets, or in a shop.
Help them get into a facility, or a true home.
Right, now, the, the, the caveat to that, of course, is, is that the housing stock is next to nothing out there. Not one county, it's all counties. I mean, throughout the state, that's very limited in our ability to get people housed, and that's the one, I think, key problem that Kim runs into when she's working with them, is being able to find, um, rent, rentals for these individuals and families, so... So, this year is, uh, obviously, we're right, and if you all been, and you all have, um, the news has been saying, and it's very true, we're right in the middle of another wave, so we're hoping that the outcome of this one won't be as severe as it was last time, um, and we're hoping that we're looking like everybody else, that down the road in the next six months, we'll be seeing that the vaccinations and stuff things taper off, but, um, we still are humbled down to be able to prepare for this. Our staff, um, are in the offices, as you've seen, but they don't take, um, clients in the office, they do it by telephone and or virtual. Um, we do in some cases where we do meet with clients, we, we do it by appointment only, and that's on a rare occasion. Um, the only one that, our two programs that are really doing a lot of face-to-face contact with clients is Head Start. Um, they're doing face-to-face, and they have their kids in the classroom, um, they still have those protocols that they have to follow for, um, keeping people safe and that type of thing. Um, and then our housing program, weatherization in particular, when they go out, they obviously have a plethora of PPEs that they have to use, we're talking about e-suits and everything, they even go that one extra distance to do their service, so... Um, and we also require the contractors that work for us to, to wear those, so that was quite a feat, getting them to...
Yeah, that's a challenge, yeah, that's working that all day.
But, you know, they're, once they get moving, and they do their typical, um, um, weatherization, um, production on these homes, I mean, it's a guaranteed income for them, so, they were really actually happy about having to be able to do that, and they were willing to work with us on that, so...
You have the, you've also taken over the, the food pantry, and the running of the food pantry, which has helped, um, hopefully here with the purchase of that building. Will go from one day to open five days, to better serve the client for the people that are in that need, and I think that the people of Humboldt have stepped up and done a good job for, for finding that building, and, uh, hopefully doing some renovations on it to get it...
We're looking forward to it.
Workable, and then you guys will not have to close your office upstairs to go run the food pantry out of the secondary road building for, on Thursday, so...
So, we're looking at that one-stop shop, which actually, uh, that really will be a benefit to everyone, including us, so... Looking very, we've, kind of, Alyssa's been very involved in that process as well, so...
Not that we're excited about moving.
No.
I'm excited about the new location, just not the process to get there.
Well, I'm gonna miss mornings that we have come in here, and then I get harassed by the lady hanging out the window. She was there this morning, I won't mention her name, but...
Diana.
She was harassing me when I was walking in, but... But we appreciate you very much.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate working here, actually, it's one of the more, uh, open counties to work in, sometimes you run into challenges, sometimes it doesn't seem like, and when I do come up, it seems to flow well here, so...
Good.
People talk it out and work it out real quick. Any other questions?
And as far as your requests, I guess we'll, when we start putting our budgets together, we'll see what, where we fit to be, and do our best to make that number work.
Yeah, that's, that's another note I'm talking about, that will be something that we'll be adding into your budget over the next, um, probably six months, as they move forward with that new office and that facility, to make sure that we put a budget in to cover the rentals and the utilities and whatever else expenses that we're gonna have there.
Well, we look forward to twisting the couple of contractors' arms to hopefully get it to move forward as fast.
I heard they were there last week.
Yep. I heard too.
So, maybe it will?
Move along, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that we can get some people that like to help on the weekends, um, you know, at least on demolition part, because the contractors don't have all that, you know, the biggest ones right here, tearing walls out or whatever, they ought to at least have a, do it over the weekend and get some stuff done, and...
Let's take a look at cost, too, when you, you know, the expenditure.
That's what we're hoping, but...
All right, okay. Thank you, Dave, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. The younger committee reports at this point.
I think, I don't have anything, because I was coming up this last week, but I haven't been attending any meetings.
Uh, the only thing I had on mine was Thursday, I came for Peggy's, um, retirement coffee. Wish her well, and, um, I think that was it for me.
And Andy's not talking.
I hit the wrong button. Uh, Wednesday, the thirtieth, I had a Rose Hill meeting, um, so, uh, I'll be going to those also, I assume, if I have any, um, touch up with everything, and we're gonna have to do our, um, letter of resolution, I'm, I'm working on that, and I'll have to get that off the agenda, um, and that resolution is saying that we are resolving, um, our twenty-eight year, um, county...
Is that being done with John, Sandy?
I'll have to have a look at it before, uh, we've all, all six of us attend, we've been counting that test, um, testing, we've all tested. Then, um, you know, then, uh, but it's basically, it's that, you know, one by one, we need to have the county's motion to work.
Was Pocahontas also accepted, I'm assuming?
Yes, Pocahontas was accepted, both of us, Pocahontas was accepted, and, and that'll be, like I said, back to, um, July one.
Okay.
That's it?
That's all, I guess.
Tuesday, I had a VA meeting in Humboldt here, Steve's claim, sorry to be out here to Peggy's retirement coffee, and, and this, this girl from the other room.
Now, I didn't have any official meetings, but I did also attend Peggy's retirement coffee on Thursday afternoon of last week.
It wasn't nice.
Does anyone else have anything, Trish? Do you have any miscellaneous items?
Um, I did, regarding drainage, a couple of months ago, or probably more now, actually, was approached by someone that develops, um, programming, that would be similar to what Secondary Roads uses for tracking, um, drainage work orders. It would do locations and, um, have an update screen and that. I was wondering if you guys would be interested in hearing their proposal and their demonstration on it.
Yes.
Was this similar to one?
Are we, are we interested in, Kim?
Absolutely.
Was it something similar to, remember, last year, down at the Drainage Field, they talked about that, wasn't it in Minnesota they were using?
Yeah, that's one, uh...
I, I didn't come in.
This is real similar, I don't know what his, theirs was there, but it's real similar to, um, apparently Secondary Roads.
That Ben uses out there.
Yep.
I think we, yeah, would be willing to give us a presentation on that?
Yes.
That would be awesome.
I will let him know.
Cause I think that, uh, entails keeping track of work orders? If that's, cause I'm thinking of, like, I know Secondary Roads, Ben always says, well, if you see something, and we put it, and they have like, it's like a master list in the data system, and then all of the Secondary Roads guys can see that. They have it for their shop, but then he has record of it. Something similar, I mean, not exactly, but...
Yeah, it's, it should track them, and it should locate them, um...
I think that'd be awesome.
I think it would be great.
It would be nice if you had a program that could actually highlight areas that have been recently completed, or say there's one section that's been totally replaced versus one small repair, and you may have several different work orders on the same line. It would be nice if there was some way you could map that, so that you could say, okay, this section was done five years ago, or this section was done last year, so you kinda, I don't know, somehow where it would all tie in would be nice.
That's a thought to see during the presentation, but, yeah, it's, it's really a more of a work order tool.
Work order and tracking of them, and...
I think that would be excellent.
I was excited when she told me about it, and it was just right in the middle of election time, and...
Nope, this is a good time of year to, hopefully, they can do that, you know, thoroughly soon.
Yeah, I will contact her today.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'll just throw this out, this morning, I got a message from a person about their road. road, wondering if we had an issue with not being cleaned, so when Ben walked in, I mentioned it to him before the meeting, and he pulled his phone out, and pretty soon he showed a map of how many times they've been there, the times, so that goes back to our tracking, he was able to pull that up, so I think it's a, a helpful tool that we give Ben when we call and say, hey, this road hasn't been cleaned or, he had the time when the machine went by and just, what, a mile down the road, they were building a, a snow fence with snow and how many times that man has been in the area, so. That tool is working.
That's awesome.
For us, that we're paying, so I think it's something that, like this, if it helps us get our job done, then that's.
Money well spent to help keep track.
Right, so that's what I would throw at you.
Yep. And good timing with Kim getting up to speed.
Right, and what is in use right now is in access, so it's something I kinda put together and I could sort and query and do stuff, so it's very rudimental.
Awesome.
So this will be way back there.
I'm looking forward to seeing what it entails.
Yep, me too.
Excellent. Anything else?
I can't do it, Karen.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned.